I was talking about what's happening.
Yeah, you said, don't get along with people in the house. I'm like, oh, yeah. I know. I was trying to, yeah. I was trying to, yeah. Yeah, you said, don't get along with people in the house. I'm like, oh, yeah. It's very simple. I think we're going to forget all that Larry's my son. Right. Like, my father's here. He was like, he was like, right. Yeah. But, you know, right. Oh, my God. So, you know. Well, I didn't think, you know, it's simple. Oh, I mean, we're not going to be able to check it. It's like, it's like, it's like, it's like. But, you know, what did you want? So, we're having way less flowers in the house. No, you're sure. You thought of anything? Yes. I don't know. I don't think. I think. And then, you know, there's something that's been, like, a lot of years, but they got, you know. How is it? You know. Um, it's done and it's like. I think. Okay. They will see. They can, like, go. Okay. Next thing, you know, on the business, I can tell you the question. Because, you know, it's very, well, you can get, you know, like, it's, you know, it's, you know, I, you know. Yeah. 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 We're trying to, like, everything. That's the next one. I have to, I have to. So, okay. They will see. They can, like, go. Okay. They have to, you know, so. Any, right? Just, you know, like, that. They don't get it. They're, you know, just, we're trying, that's all. That's the, I, 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 I. It's, well, I'm, I'm, like, a big problem. I'm trying to, like, try to, like, you know, what would you, you know, it's not, you know. You know, see, I do. Yeah. The, you know, the, like, country, you know, for what? I mean, yes, you know, there, you know, kind of, I don't know. And all the way, you know, you know, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the town council meeting to order for October seventh. And with that, I'll ask for the roll call.
Counselor Schinkin.
Here.
Counselor Hopper.
Here.
Counselor Gardner.
Present.
Counselor Peterson.
Here.
Counselor Nellens.
Present. I'd like to ask you to please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the flag of allegiance. Tonight, we have the honor of a couple of proclamations. And our first one is going to start off with proclamation honoring Leroy Marsh, Munster High School coach on his retirement. And I've asked George Schinkin to please read his proclamation.
Proclamation of the Munster Town Council, a proclamation congratulating and honoring Coach Leroy Marsh on his retirement from Munster High School. Whereas Leroy Marsh is a graduate of Chicago Roosevelt High School, where he was a four-sport athlete, winning numerous athletic and scholarship awards. And whereas Leroy Marsh is a graduate of Augustana College and Purdue University. And whereas Leroy Marsh taught physical education, health, and safety for the school town of Munster. And whereas Leroy Marsh retired in May 2024 after teaching for 51 years, having taught in all but one of the schools in the school town of Munster, school system, and was the first instructor in the school town of Munster to become a certified dare instructor. And whereas Leroy Marsh coached football for 45 years at Munster High School with 38 years as head coach. And whereas during his career, Leroy Marsh coached Munster to nine conference titles, five sectional titles, one regional title, and was a North's All-Star coach five times, finishing with a record of 228, 166, and having coached 59 first-team All-State players. And whereas Coach Marsh was inducted into the Indiana Football Hall of Fame in 2007, now therefore vetted, proclaimed by the Munster Town Council that Coach Leroy Marsh is hereby honored and congratulated on long tenure as an educator-coach and expresses its appreciation for his service and long-lasting positive impact on Munster. And be it further, passed and adopted this seventh day, October 2024, by a vote of five in favor, zero opposed.
Just to make this formal, I'll make a motion to proclaim congratulating and honoring Coach Leroy Marsh on his retirement from Munster High School.
I'll second that. Any further comments? Wonderful thing. Voice vote.
Counselor Schinkin.
As a former player, yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
As a former official.
I'll say yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
As a formal student, I'll say yes.
But as a former parent of a player, we appreciate everything Coach Marsh has done for our community. So a five-zero, this proclamation is formally passed.
Thank you all very much. It's been my pleasure. I feel blessed to be here. I feel blessed to be here. The last 51 years teaching at Munster and coaching, it's been my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Another proclamation. Do you have someone here to receive this?
Yes, Jose Diaz is here in the audience.
Great, great. This is a proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month and Hispanic Military Veteran. And Counselor Gardner will read the proclamation.
Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month observed from September 15th to October 15th each year is a time to celebrate and recognize the invaluable contribution that Hispanics and Latinos-Americans have made to the rich cultural fabric, history, and prosperity of the United States. And whereas Hispanic Americans through their deep commitment to family, work, and community have played a vital role in the growth and development of our town, bringing with them a legacy of service, hard work, and determination. And whereas countless Hispanic members of our community have answered the call to serve in the United States Armed Forces, sacrificing their time, energy, and sometimes their lives to protect the freedom and values upon which our nation was founded. And whereas Hispanic veterans in our town embody the highest ideals of patriotism, courage, and selfishness. And their military service has helped safeguard our country and uphold the rights and liberties we all cherish. And whereas the town council recognizes the bravery, resilience, and heroism displayed by Hispanic veterans who have honorably served in various branches of the United States military, defending our nations both at home and abroad, often in the face of extraordinary challenges and adversities. And whereas the contributions of Hispanic veterans not only reflect their dedications to our nation, but also serve as a source of inspiration for future generations of Hispanic Americans who seek to serve their country and community. Now therefore, the Town Council of Munster do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th to 2024 as its buried Hispanic Heritage Month in the town of Munster, and extend our deepest gratitude to the Hispanic veterans of our community for their service and sacrifice. Be it further proclaimed that the town of Munster proudly celebrates the rich heritage and contributions of Hispanic Americans and commits to fostering an inclusive community where the history, culture, and service of all its residents are respected and honored. In witness whereof, and I here, hereon to set my hand and cause this seal, and I'll ask President Nellens to sign this proclamation in honor of the Hispanic Heritage Month and Hispanic Military Veterans on this day, seventh day of October 2024.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation.
A second. And I would ask Jose Diaz, who is the commander of the local Veterans of VFW, which I believe is what post is this Jose? Post 16, he would come forward and I'll present you with the proclamation.
We'll take a vote.
We're gonna vote to take. Okay, I'm sorry.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Proclamation passes five-zero.
It takes us up to public comment. And we have the rules and regulations posted outside the meeting. Anyone that would care to leave at this time is certainly welcome to or stay. And on the open to the public, we have two minutes maximum per person or five minutes per group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy. The chair at its sole discretion may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time and may end the open to the public session. All speakers will be timed by the clerk treasurer. This portion of the meeting will not exceed 20 minutes. I understand there's a lot of interest in tonight's meeting. And as just to gauge to know where we're at, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand and telling me how many of you would like to speak on Ridge Road. Okay. Do we have other folks that want to speak on something else other than Ridge Road? We have a mix of them. All right. Since we have a group lined up, and they appear to be the majority of those that want to speak, we'll go ahead and start. We have a sign-up sheet that we want to furnish. As you come up and speak, we'll have you sign in, and we'll not be counted in the two minutes. And please, as best you can, be considerate of the others that are there. We're only allowing 20 minutes for this section. And I'd like to give all those that would like to speak the opportunity. So with that, if you'd give us your name and address, and we're ready to start.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Bob Thomas. I live at 8445 Manor Avenue. And this has to do with the NIC TV. And what we're saying is, I don't want to call it broken promises, but we're led to believe that there would be a barrier for noise. Then they come back and say no. We're led to believe after that there'd be a fence. There's still no fence on the west side of the train tracks. And there's concern about the owners about their smaller children wandering out into the tracks because there's nothing to stop them. Secondly, not as important, but just as concerned, we were supposed to be landscaping furnished after the tram had been completed, and there was no sign of landscaping coming as of yet. Anything else, Tony?
No, that's it. Sir, what was your name again, please?
Bob Thomas. Right. So I had brought this to Wendy, well, I've CC'd Wendy on an email. I talked to NIC TV, and they haven't responded yet to my across tour effects. I was hoping the town of Munster could step in and find out what they're going to do.
And I forwarded your email to our NICD representatives, so, and I didn't get a chance to call you back.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ken Skun, 8010 Forest Avenue here in Munster. I say here in Munster because I was in a meeting not long ago, and we were talking about, you know, where we lived. Somebody asked me where I lived. And I said in Munster, and the response was, oh, I was just in Munster last week for something called the Monarch Festival. And it talked about what a wonderful activity it was, how many children were there, how interested they were in it. And it dawned on me that two weeks ago or three weeks ago when we had our last council meeting, I should have said something then. But congratulations. I mean, it's a partnership with the town, and I wrote down some of the historical society, the garden club, environmental groups, all getting together and doing that, and it was terrific. What was amazing was that the same weekend, we had the crews with the specimen cars lined up on Ridge Road. And the number of people that were pedestrians walking up and down Ridge Road, visiting shops. Some of the shops that normally close early in the afternoon opened again so that they could be open. And every shop owner I talked to thought it was wonderful. We should do it again. On the other hand, I have been a little disappointed. I know that the council is making advances in thinking about Ridge Road. And I spent, you know, better part of a year last year, last year, working on that project with 12 other members of the community who were particularly very, very good and knowledgeable. And we would like to be part of, we'd like to have you hear us talk about what we did and why. And maybe some of our consultants that we worked, worked with. I learned so much during that year. And it's locked inside of me. I'd like to share it with members of the council. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam.
I'm ready. Mike Komovic, 1833 Tulane. I would like, Mike, it's a question. On Franlin Parkway, you put in the yield to pedestrian signs from White Oak to Oriole, with the exception of Greenwood. Why was Greenwood missed? That's the only, all the other streets where you added the crosswalk, you've got a yield pedestrian sign, Greenwood doesn't. Can you get a little bit bigger signs? Or are they only coming one side?
Mike, we'll have to find those answers out.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mitch Barloga, 1900 Bluebird Lane. Mayor, because later on in this agenda, you will be deciding on a revision to the Ridge Road project and submitting a perpetual review. What's important to all this, however, is public comment, public feedback. Elections do not decide this. Elections are a random case of all sorts of issues flying at the wall at the same time, and people having to decide. But it isn't the proactive way where people come out, actually can decide on an issue, and decide on what fits for its community. We believe that was done with the street state project so many years ago. So much so that the federal government awarded this community an unprecedented amount of money, $17 million. Now, this was just a plan that was kind of going back and forth. I get that. More than a plan, and already approved by the highest form of our government, and one of the most competitive grant programs that I can imagine. You can go back to 2009 on this program. You're not going to find a community getting nearly as much money as Munster did as much that they believe in this project. So with that said, we submitted a letter to all of you several months ago from the level of Munster, requesting a public forum from this council so we can elicit the true opinions of this community, which we believe are strongly in favor of this project as it is. For the level of Munster, we'll take the initiative and help this public forum on November 21st, a Thursday evening in Munster Church. We're asking you all to be there. We want as many people in there as possible. We want to do the job of making sure people know what the project is before they come to one conclusion or another based on any kind of outside influence and what have you. We want to make sure the facts are said, and when the facts are said, we believe that people will really get behind this project. There's so many have in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, I'm Mike Eckler, 113 Beverly Place in Munster here. Just wanted to begin, provide an update as to where we are on the Beverly Parkway beautification project that's been going on. We've been working all summer with the town council, with Public Works. And as of September 19th, we sat down with the landscape architect who came up with some ideas for us that we all believe now seem to be workable. It was a great artist rendering, so, and any of you that have been down there recently can see, it's been terraformed. The dirt has been taken away. We're ready for seeding. And talking with Counselor Nellens, it looks like we'll have some trees we'll be able to put in. And so again, from my, I'm the man myself, some of the residents that are here that are part of this, want to thank you all for your support. I want to thank you for sticking with us and making a plan turn into an action, turn into what looks like now going to be reality. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Mike.
The rendering is in the back corner. I just wanted to extend.
Evening, Tom Jurich, 1839 Magenholium. I'm talking about Ridge Road and some of the things associated with it. When there are cars and they're diverted because there's not as much road to drive on, they're going somewhere. People are going to go to work. They're going to their appointments. You know where they're not going to go? It's too busy, too much traffic. They're not going to go to your business on Ridge Road. They're going to find somewhere else. There's a lot of restaurants, a lot of stores. I can attest to this because the construction is taking place on Holly, on Franlin, on Chestnut. You want to see traffic that's increased, that's not in those roads? Come anytime, any day. Come on Bluebird, come on Crestwood, come count the cars. It's at least three times as many cars. It's dangerous, and the cars are still going somewhere, but that's the road and that's where it takes somewhere. I think there needs to be improvement on Ridge Road. I think the council is doing a great job with compromise, looking at alternative plans. I think everyone should come to the work sessions. I was here the other day when you had it. Some good ideas were discussed. There's good discussion. Instead of people being here at the meeting and being fired up, it's good to just sit down and listen to you guys talk about these things. I do want to point out that this isn't a new project. This was before the election. Four of the candidates here who ran with opposition all came out and said they were against language reduction. How do I know that? I asked them. I saw their websites. I saw their Facebook postings. I asked the other candidates. I didn't get an answer. So for me, if I can't get it, I'm against it. I'm for it. And I've heard people say, well, we have to look at the vote. Let me tell you a little bit about the vote. In 2015, the most contested race, 2,500 people voted. 2019, in the most contested council race, 4,100 people voted. In this last election, for you guys, people in your election, 5,600 people voted in the election. So people were tuned in. People knew what was going on. This was an issue, and it was discussed. And I want to make sure that we keep your promises that you told us. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Hey, good evening. I'm Paul Ritter. I'm the 8118, right? I wanted to vote no on the current proposed version of the reimagine Ridge Road grant. I was on that steering committee that Ken referenced, and I appreciate the over-year of public input that we listened to to help shape the plan. This original plan is what Munster residents stated that they wanted very clearly. We had something very specific. I agree. We should have more discussion about that. We had that already. That was the original plan. The original plan fulfills their vision of Munster and this area, which what they want. They want a downtown. They want increased safety, and they want to support local small businesses. We don't want Meyer. We don't want a big Target. Ridge Road, we can't support that anyways. The only way to get small businesses is to do this plan. That's the only way that's going to happen. Otherwise, people are just going to fly through right now. You need to make this a place to stop, a place to go. The only people, you said you were Munster first when you ran. Show it. I make this a pain in the butt for Lansing and Highland residents. So they don't just fly through our town. We want people to be a destination, and that's what this idea is, not just to fly through you. Otherwise, we should just make it eight lanes. Just have people rip through our town as fast. Sorry to get off. So this squanders our once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The costs are the same amount of money to the town that the plan that you're proposing. It's going to save amount of time, but you're just going to waste it all. And there's not going to have anything to do. I want you to think about what it's going to be like 50 years from now. People had a vision of a positive Ridge Road where we could beautify, not only beautify it, but take care of our waterage and drain issues, and we could improve the town that I want to live in and that people said that they want to live in. That's the most important part. They said they wanted this.
Thanks. Thanks, Bob.
Hi, I'm Leah Kilavarda-Funston, 8301 Greenwood. I'm here to ask the council not to vote on your new plan for Ridge Road and not to submit your changes to the DOT until there has been as transparent a process for public input on your plan as there was for the original plan. We have a $17 million opportunity to improve the long-term financial stability and cultural vitality of Munster, and to improve the quality of life for all of us who live in the neighborhoods around Ridge. This is a big deal. Every family at the beginning of their 30-year mortgages in Munster, like mine, needs to be thinking about the stability of Munster long-term. The original Ridge Road plan was the result of a process that was thorough, transparent, and full of opportunities for public input. I saw these opportunities, logged into those calls, and completed those surveys. So did many of my friends. If there are any residents who didn't see them, couldn't attend them, or felt their voices weren't heard, and if you all want to change that plan, that should be done through a process that is equally transparent and community-involved. If you aren't transparent and don't seek widespread public input, you'll erode residents' trust in your governance process and in your ability to make high-quality decisions that prepare Munster to thrive long-term. With uncertainty around a major infrastructure project that directly impacts my family and friends' safety and quality of life, and the long-term stability of my financial investment in our homes, today, my family is much more nervous about renovating a second house to potentially stay in Munster long-term. We are Munster High and College graduates. I grew up near the east end of the Ridge Road project and my husband near the west end, where we currently live with our young family, and just purchased our second house at Munster. Six years ago, when we renovated our first house, we felt optimistic. Like Munster was on an upward spiral, in the words of the former Republican mayor of Carmel, Indiana, who said, quote, "Cities are either on an upward spiral or a downward spiral, and there's no in-between." In 2020, my family was excited when we saw a methodical process begin to reimagine the aged and unsightly and dangerous ridge in Calumet Corridor. We participated, liked the resulting plan, and were excited when Munster was one of the few municipalities in the nation to be awarded a grant. We felt Munster was at the beginning of an exciting and inspiring new vision, like Mayor Brainard did in Carmel. I sent you guys a great video to show what Carmel is doing. And I'd be happy to post that for all of you. When some Munster residents voice their concerns about...
I'm sorry, but the two minutes are up. Thank you, Leah.
Hi, I'm Barb Matts, 7925 Forest Avenue. And I'm about the Beverly Improvement. Thank you very much for working on that. I just want to make sure you guys put stop signs in as I was nearly taken out as someone was going 30 on the two-block part of Beverly. It's amazing that they like the new hairpin turns, and it's become a little bit of a raceway for people with faster cars. Don't anybody please think that's an advertisement, but we've had a lot of teenagers coming through ripping. So I just want to make sure we get those stop signs put in. And we'd like, I know Nipso has a light on Beverly that goes down on Forest, but it provides about as much light as nothing. So what, how do we get a light put in to our neighborhood from Munster? What's the process? Because it was missed when we did, when we did that. I wasn't able to be at that meeting, and I apologize, but you know, we'd like to have a little bit of light in our neighborhood.
We'll certainly take a look at that.
Especially if you're going to put in new stop signs.
Yeah.
People are, are going to keep going through it. So I just wanted to. What do you, what do I have to do to get a light? Who do I have to contact? What's the process?
Now, she, she would contact through the town and that would come through Public Works.
And to go to Public Works and request?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Don't you think she's asking, we can, we can start.
Get it started.
Okay. Barbara, we'll start it. We'll get such.
One light would be great. A few more would be helpful, but I'd like just one light at that intersection. Thanks.
Thanks, Barbara. Thank you.
Don't ask for two, Barbara.
Michael Gafford, one zero three zero Oxford Place. I'm actually not here to dispute lane count on Ridge Road. I, I'm here because what I believe is indisputable is that. The original proposal would have achieved its goal. To provide safe walking and biking along Ridge Road. What we can dispute is the intent of the new proposal, and honestly, I'm not sure what that intent really is. But it's certainly not safe biking and walking along Ridge Road. An adjacent walkway or bike path to Ridge Road will, will never be safe. It's not safe now. It's, you know, it's lipstick on a pig. It's a bridge to nowhere. Now, we're, we're putting a substantial amount of money into a bike lane no one's going to use. If you're going to keep it the way it is now. Or it's money wasted if we walk away from, from this proposal, this, this grant. The money that we've already invested. A bike lane or a walkway, you know, one block north, south, the bridge running east-west would, would be safer, but. Right on Ridge Road is, is no different than it is today, and no one can say that it's a safe place to do either. You promised to keep four lanes. What safeties will you consider for the walkers and bikers? How will you conserve the town's tax revenue and not waste funds invested in this proposal to date? How will you avoid an unused walk path, bike path, and the tax dollars wasted to build it? And no one's going to use it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Excuse me, we'll let you get started. This will be our last speaker for tonight.
Hi, my name is Dominique Dawson, eighty-one forty-six Cremean Avenue. I'd like to voice my support for the original Bridge Road plan developed via public comment. And not the current one up for, up for vote. The Ridge Road reimagine is really not a new concept. It's something that's been done over and over again throughout communities throughout the world. And with a lot of success, as mentioned before, Carmel, I think, is a very great success story, very close to us. And if you go there on any night, you see business and commerce happening and people just gathering. Due to accessibility often, unfortunately patronized businesses in Highland via bicycle path because it's easy. Low stress and very convenient, but I'd love to do the same here in Munster. I think I have a little bit of a unique perspective. I was born and raised in Italy and have a new resident in Munster. And I'm very used to downtown area that is built up and accessible. Being originally from Italy and not having the same thing in Munster, it seemed a little bit odd and really factored into my thoughts about moving here. Ultimately, we did for different reasons, but it was a factor and I thought about it. I'm sure other folks think about it as they consider Munster as a new home. And with my town, with my, sorry, with my time with American service members in Italy and Europe. I've never once heard any one of them complain about accessible downtowns and or restricted or smaller lanes. Rather, they really crave it when they go back to the U.S. and they don't have the same in their hometowns. And honestly, a big reason why they come, go back and visit, not for the monuments, but really for those walkable areas, those memories. And understanding that there is a different way to live than in a car center of your community. Thank you again. I really hope you all vote against the current proposal and opt for the original one that was stated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do. I do. We received. We received sixteen unique email electronic public comments that. Support five lanes of Ridge Road. We received fifty-six that supported the original proposal and encouraged public input. Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, it closes the open republic session that takes us up to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion approving.
Mr. President, I do have an objection. I'd like to pull off from the consent agenda. I'd like to pull off the invoices for Westman, Bennett, and Icorn and Icorn and consider them separate.
Okay, you got that? Yeah. All right, so now we can take a, a motion on the consent agenda minus those items.
I'll take, I'll make a motion on the amended consent agenda.
Make a motion. We need a second. Any further comments? Questions? Notified. Steve Nun will call for a roll call vote.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Knowles.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve the town attorney's, Mr. Westland's invoices.
I second that.
And Icorn and Icorn.
And Icorn and Icorn.
I second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments on this? Saying now, we complete call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
No.
Councillor Knowles.
Yes. All right, that takes us up to old business, that's ordinance nineteen sixty-six, the twenty twenty-five budget and tax levy adoption.
So council had their public hearing, the first reading on the ordinance at their last meeting, and this evening you're asked to adopt budget. This will then be submitted to Department of Government Finance for their review, and then we would expect to have it certified back to us by the end of the year.
We have a. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. To adopt ordinance nineteen sixty-six on second reading as presented. Please support.
I'll second that motion. Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
I guess my only comment would be is since the passing of the two thousand twenty-four ordinance. There's approximately twenty new positions that we're budgeting for next year or that are new from the two thousand twenty-four budget. And again, I understand that reserves are going to take care of those, the, the funding and things like that. I guess I would really like to see that. Those positions make a strong emphasis, or at least the new, new hires make a new emphasis, maybe even the council here. Make a new emphasis on really engaging our residents in a more proactive manner, like websites, with reannouncements, project updates. And detailed reports to the council along the way. So as we get additional staff members, I think. If we can look at outwardly looking at public relations, I think that would be a big help.
Yeah, I think we were talking about public relations to work our new website and even doing our old Mon cab.
Right, I don't think we hired, we.
We didn't hire anybody.
No specific positions and just thinking that, just generally as, as a, as a council vision.
Yeah, having somebody go out there and start filming.
And certainly we can, with the new technology and the new way of doing things, incorporate that into the website. So it's all good. Sounds all good. Any other comments, questions? Saying now, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Knowles.
Yes.
As a reminder, all five of you need to sign three copies of this, and I'm sending it down the line as we speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That takes us up to new business, and the first item is resolution twenty-one thirty-nine, discussing American boards.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty-one thirty-nine as presented.
I'll second. With the motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, comments? Saying now, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Knowles.
Yes. That takes us up to ordinance nineteen sixty-seven, which relates to stop signs.
This ordinance would put in new stop signs at Thirtieth and Jefferson, Thirtieth and LeRoe, Camelia and Oreo. Timberwood and Wildflower, Marvel Lane and Salisbury, Beverly Place and Forest. And it would also reduce this speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five on Franlin Park.
All right. Mr. President, I'd like to make an ordinance. A motion, a motion for ordinance nineteen sixty-seven, a first reading as presented and scheduled second reading for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I second that. Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, comments?
Mr. President, I, I guess I asked at the agenda review meeting, and I'll ask again, what was the determination on this? It says council determined. Did we have a list or a metrics or a series of items that we're looking at? That, that realized that these are the important spots to put sign, stop signs compared to other spots?
We're still working on a metrics. These are areas that we took a look at that. Were. Dangerous areas, particularly we're talking about Forest and Beverly. We have stop signs, but then you have a travel distance and then there's no stop sign. And you have another car coming in a, in a different direction and there's no stop sign. It, because of the nature of that intersection. Felt that it needed to have the stop signs to prevent any.
I guess what I'm concerned with is. Future requests and being, you know, being requested of the council or staff if we don't have a metrics in place. And I know we used to have warrants and traffic counts and things like that. I did, I do appreciate a director of operations setting over. Traffic counts this morning that we could look at, but again, part of this is number of accidents in suburban, in, in neighborhoods and things like that. I guess I would really like to make sure that we don't lose track of getting that data and getting that metrics put together. So we have a protocol to go through when future requests are happening.
Certainly.
The other item I would say is that, again, it says here it's needed to help reduce speeding. The United States Department of Transportation does state that stop signs are not intended to be used primarily, primarily to slow traffic down between intersections. Really only stop signs, their primary purpose is only to control the traffic at the intersection. In, in streets in neighborhoods that there's speeding going on, they're really ineffective. Because all people do is they, they roll through a stop sign and then they keep on going faster to get the next one. So. And potentially, they're potentially drape, dangerous, just because drivers sometimes accelerate then more with this, so.
Gain the loss that they got.
So I want to be careful that we don't get in a spot of doing too many stop signs throughout. Because I think they, they could be used, the more that they're out there, the more they, they could become dangerous.
This was also Chief Shep was talking about it, and they all support this for public safety. So I'm going to listen to our chief.
And then I'm going to ask our town attorney to comment on why we're doing an ordinance. For the stop signs in order to have it.
In order to write tickets ultimately, and I understand you're kind of, at least the discussion previously was ever going to kind of ease into the. Because people don't know the stop signs are there initially, it's the same thing. But at some point, if you're ever going to write a ticket on it, you're going to need an ordinance for the officer, for that ticket to stick. Otherwise, it won't stick in court, so that's why you're doing that.
Mr. President, I'd like to weigh in, please. I, I agree with my colleague, Gardner. Think metrics system is important. Town has heard me make comments on this in the past. I also support this ordinance. I think that what's being done here is a process towards. Addressing the serious concern in our town which is speed. And Mr. President, you and the news you can use, just recently in October, wrote, I think, a very compelling article about speed. And this is part of this effort here of us addressing these very serious concerns. I am familiar with what Mr. Gardner said, that stop signs are not designed to be used principally for addressing speed, but it certainly can be. Part of an overall concept towards addressing these types of public safety concerns. And this council is focused on that. We, as the town notes, we have recently hired additional police officers. Chief has spoken about devoting some of these new officers to traffic control. And we've hired, we have purchased a number of new vehicles to assist in that process. What we're seeing here is an overall concept of us addressing this very serious concern. And tonight's ordinance, in my opinion, is part of that process that we are putting forward to the town. And I think it's, I think it is commendable and I support what we're doing here tonight.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Just, just a matter of procedure here a little bit. Beverly and Forest is listed in the memo. I don't see it in the ordinance. Is there? Was it number six?
I'm, I'm waiting for it. Click a lot so I can.
Oh, you know what? It's not listed in the, in the chart. It's, it's.
It's listed.
Okay, I'm good. I got you. The other ones are two ways. My apologies. Thank you.
That is a pair of four ways. Technically correct.
Okay.
All right, with that, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Knowles.
Yes. That takes us up to acceptance of the health insurance rates.
These are our medical dental and vision rates for employees for the twenty twenty-five plan year. There was an increase of two percent over the previous year. We'll continue to pay ninety percent of the premium when the board quota picks up the remaining ten percent.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to accept the medical dental and vision rates for the twenty twenty-five plan year. I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. My understanding, these are, these are, there was a favorable.
These are very favorable rates. We, in fact, last year, coming into this year, we had a major reduction in our rate. They only have a two percent rate. The market is more of like five percent. So the medical trust that we are part of is really serving the town well.
Good, that's a state trust with aim.
Yes, with aim for the, for all three of those insurances. It's a cool plus. So and, and one of their, if not their primary focus is in keeping the rates stable. And it has proven to do that, and the coverage that we're getting as employees is wonderful. It really does. It, it's a really good program.
A win-win.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions? Saying now, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Knowles.
Yes. Item number D is engagement letter with focus forensics.
This is to engage a firm for some expert witness services that the town needs for a pending litigation matter that we have.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the engagement letter with focus forensics. For expert witness services on a time and expense basis and the payment of a two thousand dollar retainer.
I'll second. Please support. Any further questions, comments? Saying now, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
No.
Councillor Knowles.
Yes. That takes us up to item E, builder's insurance extension.
Town had a builder's insurance policy put in place at the beginning of the year for the pro shop, the new building that's going in along with golf cart storage. This is just to extend it to the end of this line.
Mr. President, I make a motion to authorize an extension of coverage for the builder's risk policy through November first. Mr. President, I make a motion to authorize an extension of coverage for the builder's risk policy through November first, twenty twenty-four, at a cost of one thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Further questions, comments? Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. It takes us up to item F, supplemental agreement on Main Street Engineering.
DLZ is doing the design engineering work for the Main Street project. And council had some modifications to some of the things that they wanted to do, which is resulting with additional costs. And so DLZ is looking to have this supplemental agreement put into place.
We have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the supplemental letter, agreement number one from DLZ for a new contract total of eight hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments?
Were any of the items that are being taken out of the contract, are those recommendations from DLZ, our engineers? Are those recommendations from the request from the council?
Those are council requests.
On on page two, it shows that something that will help reduce speed and public outreach were taken out. Is that by design?
We just took a look at it, and we moved all the concrete barriers and things down the middle.
It it is, it is. There is the engineering piece that no state. And again, especially on Main Street where there's no need for a long stretch of that or left-hand turns, that by taking out even a moundable curb in the middle, which will help reduce speed on Main Street, make it a safer road, by having an extended median that is just hash marked, does make the road a little bit more unsafe. Because now you have people trying to use that turn lane as a passing lane or as a way to get people in and out. And again, I certainly understand the public safety issue of fire trucks and police cars and trying to turn.
That's what we did.
But but a moundable curb that you could have fire trucks go on and things like that. I I guess, as long as I know that this is, again, engineering is not asking this to be taken out. This is the council reducing, you know, reducing or taking this out. I guess I just, I want to be clear because I I think part of this is, that's an easy safety measure that we could keep in there. But if we want to take it out, if that's a wish of the council, I it's also wishes of our public safety officials out there.
Mr. President, I'd like to weigh in. Safety is a two-way street. It is not just safety of vehicles on on Main Street that we are concerned about. It is also safety of our public safety officers. And in this particular instance, we all participated in a work study session where members of the fire department and they weighed in on the need to be able to turn those those fire engines around on Main Street. And and we're gonna, we're gonna revisit the issue of protecting our public safety officers when we talk about Ridge Road. But right here, that's part of what we're doing here, is we are taking a global view of what public safety means. And that means addressing all of the stakeholders, not just favored stakeholders. That's part of what I think this, this is one of the things that makes me proud to serve on this council, is that we consider all aspects of public safety. And we arrive at conclusions that are reasonable compromises of all of those important stakeholder needs. So this is, this is what we have in front of us right now. And I think it's important for the members of our community to understand that we take this global view.
Again, I I, it's okay that we're moving forward with this. I'm I'm glad this this has been delayed because of this, this cause we're now three years removed from when Main Street would be getting bid out right now. And these these changes, and again, I do think these are changes that fire department trucks could go on top of moundable curb, you know, regular curb. They go over curbs to get in driveways. They go over curbs to get into subdivisions and things like that. This, I think, a-again, I I think the concern is that we're gonna keep Main Street being as fast of Main Street as we can, and we're not looking at some traffic engineering ways to reduce the speed on Main Street.
All right. Thank you. All right, we have a motion. We have support. Any other comments? Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. It takes us up.
I need all five of you to sign that as well, please.
I sent him down. I'll sign him later.
Thank you.
All right, H, change order for the CC MG twenty twenty-three dash two. Oh, I skipped G. Gee, we'll go back to G. That's the change order, release of retainage for the CC MG twenty twenty-three dash one.
Yes, this is for the work on Zalia Thicket, Pastur Gate, Tamarash, Treadway, Tudor, and Franklin. And this is the final balancing change order that goes into place, which sets the final contract cost and is seeking to have retained it really soon.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the supplemental agree, letter agreement number one from DLZ for a new contract total of eight hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
We just.
Oh.
We're on the next one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number three, bringing the final contract total to two million nine hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred and five dollars and forty-six cents, and release the retainage to Milestone Contractors North for CC MG twenty twenty-three dash one in the amount of two, two hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll second that motion.
Support. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. So that takes us up to H, Public Works Change Order, just two Cs. CC.
CC MG.
MG twenty twenty-three dash two.
Correct. But this is for the work on Terrace, Forest, River, and Cray. And this is the balancing change order on that object. Not ready to release the retain to check up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number one in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents, bringing the final contract total to one million four hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents to Milestone Contractors North for CC MG twenty twenty-three dash one.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have support. Further questions, comments? I'm just gonna make a comment that we're making a substantial amount of investment in the streets and the water mains here in town. And unfortunately, that some of the projects have gone on a little bit long because of materials and difficulty getting all the final inspections done. But when it's all done, we'll have a lot of nice streets done here in town, and we're back on their roll. And our goal is to continue with the streets and making sure we're back up to where Munster is proud of its streets. All right, with that, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Takes us up to number I, Public Works, Hundred Twenty Water Service for lead line, lead service lines.
So all water utilities are under mandate to be identifying and replacing lead service lines. Next week, there's a deadline for the initial inventory, and we have been working with Hundred Twenty Water, too, in the database to track that. And we would like to continue another year with that software database. And in addition, we also have a requirement after this deadline to send notices out to every property that we either know has lead lines or that we cannot identify what they have. And we would like to use Hundred Twenty Water to send out those notifications.
The very important thing to have done. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Hundred Twenty Water for software and data management of the lead service line program at a cost of sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, and issued the required notices for unknown service line material at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand and fifteen dollars.
We have support. I'll second. With motion, we have a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to Public Works and the Pump Station Rook.
Calum Avenue Pump Station needs a new roof, and staff went out, got three quotes, and Century Roofing had the best price, and we have had great experience like they're running in Munster as a.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to authorize Century Roofing to replace the roof on the Calum Avenue Pump Station at a cost not to exceed twenty-nine thousand and twenty-eight dollars. I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments?
Council, you ready for me?
I'm just gonna make one comment, that we do pride ourselves in town, making sure that our buildings and structures are in good shape. And we have a staff that diligently goes out watching this. Anytime there's a problem, we make arrangements to get it fixed. So with that, you may please call your role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. All right, that takes us up to K, the Town Hall Doors.
Staff went out to get quotes to replace the main entry doors here at Town Hall. Only one responded, that was Century Roofing, and so we're looking for approval for the replacement of those doors.
Council President, I'd like to motion authorize Century Roofing to install the new doors and entry system at the doors of Town Hall that it costs not to exceed one hundred and one thousand dollars, nine hundred, one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and ten.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments?
Other than the, this item on the agenda does remind me of the overall town remodeling and renovation project, I believe, needs to get put back on our agenda. We have a police station that is full of people that needs more room. We have other department and office buildings in here, offices that need renovation. So I I would like to make sure that our council does take direction and look at the Town Hall renovations and remodeling as quick as we can.
And fire station number two. Fire station is also included in that.
Our station number two needs some work.
Seeing no further comment, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. All right. PD, vehicle equipment purchases.
PD got quotes for the console mounting docks for their computers for the new take-home vehicles.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion to authorize the police department to purchase the equipment needed to outfit the new squad consoles for computer implementation at a cost not to exceed sixty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-five. I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Further comments? Seeing none, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item M, Police Department Fiber Project.
The police department is regularly updating fiber throughout the town, and this is the the areas that they're wanting to address right now. They went out and got quotes. Midwestern Electric was the one who wanted to provide a quote. The other two chose not to. And so they're, but we're looking for a thought to have them do that work.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Munster Police Department to enter into an agreement with Midwestern Electric LLC to complete fiber projects located on Omen Avenue to Manor Avenue on Ridge, Southwood, and Forty-Fifth, the Frank A. Chairman School, and Calum Avenue, Forty-Fifth Westbound State Line, not to exceed one hundred thirty-seven thousand two hundred and forty.
Do we have support?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to N, which is the Police Department Duo Software Agreement.
Yes, there's a requirement that that the police databases, both things are contain sensitive information, have to have multi-factor authentication. And staff worked and were looking for a good solution. This is what they found. They think this is the best thing for them to do in order to commit to compliance.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Munster Police Department Chief Steven Shekka to enter into an agreement with Network Solutions to purchase seventy-five Cisco Duo access licenses and the professional services needed to implement them for a total of seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. It takes us up to O, and that's the Police Department Scheduling and Training Software.
This is actually two different softwares that are related. They're in a they already have the software package, Power DMS. They've been looking, PD has for a while to find a sketching software that works well. And this, this they believe is gonna meet their needs. And it also makes it easier for the officer. They don't have to have multiple logins. They fall within the same, the same software family. They're also wanting to go with their power-ready software, which is for performance tracking and for training purposes. So we're looking to enter into a three-year agreement to have those on there.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to authorize Chief of Police Stephen Shekka to enter into a three-year agreement with Power DMS by NeoGo to purchase power time and power-ready for a total of twenty-five, twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty cents over a three-year period.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. It takes us up to item P, which is disposal of property. We have a memo.
Yes, there's property from the Treasury's Office, Police Department, and since we met during the agenda review, the Building Department has given us a list of equipment and old office furniture, things like that, that we would like to dispose of. We're repurposing as much as we can, and the police department does have some toner cartridges that they're going to try to sell, and if not, then they will just have to give this back.
Okay, do we have support for this?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to declare the listed equipment surplus and authorize disposal as mentioned in the memo.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Again, by state regulations will require to declare, declare surplus and in order to make arrangements to dispose of any of those things. Seeing them, please call the role.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. All right, that takes us up to item Q, which is Ridge Road. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Nobody's gonna make it. I'm gonna make a motion to approve submittal of the proposed amendment to the grant agreement and submittal of the preliminary engineering assessment to the Federal Highway Administration.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. With a motion, we have a second. Further comments from the council?
Because I'll mention, back in two thousand and ten was the original time of the Munster Comprehensive Plan at that time identified Ridge Road and Calumet Corridors, and Mr. Nology might have been on that committee with that council as one of the four highest priorities for revitalization in the town of Munster. That was back in two thousand and ten. Then in two thousand and twenty, the collaborative effort between Resident Businesses Advisory Committee, the Munster Town Council, town staff, public, really began to put the town in a position to apply and ultimately received the seventeen million dollar raise grant. During the years of two thousand and twenty and twenty one, the planning process included four advisory committee meetings, two public work meetings, over twenty stakeholder interviews, multiple department head meetings, three public workshops, and an online engagement that included three hundred and seventy four website subscribers, four thousand four hundred website visits, two hundred and forty five website rendering comments, one thousand sixty six poll responses, and one thousand five hundred and nine poll comments. Overall, the goals and objectives of this project was to improve safety for drivers walking and cyclists along Ridge Road corridor, improve business and economic vitality along Ridge Road, reinforce the sense of downtown place to our community, and enhancing the ability to absorb sewer water and reduce flooding. In other words, this was better for safety, better for business, and really better for residents. I'm not in favor of alternate two that been recommended for the following reasons. One, there was a plant that lacked of public information. Couple of things have happened in the first nine months of this council. One, the overall website for this project was, was removed. On that public, on that website was all kinds of data, the good and the bad. The comments from the hospital, the comments about the raised grant proposal, all kinds of minutes from meetings, all kinds of public information was taken down. Two, there's been no public forums and public education that had been, has not been produced by the town or town council has been non-existent. When asked to have a public meeting, the council has refused to schedule a public meeting. And even tonight, the full preliminary engineering assess, engineering assessment that we're preparing to give to the Federal Highway Administration was not uploaded after we talked about uploading it at the agenda review meeting the other night. Why is this important? The lack of facts and research, I believe, while I understand others on the council wanting to keep their, their pledge of no, no lane reduction, you also stated in your literature, you supported a full and proper study before making any changes to this or any other major thoroughfare. In fact, the consultants were told in January two thousand and twenty four, after mentioning that they had a traffic modeling results for an available road capacity for the council to review, they were told not to pursue this and only to look at traffic in two lanes each direction. It is important that we get facts out about this. Even the other day at the gender review meeting, there was talk about rebate terminology that we, the town would have to pay all seventeen million dollars first before we get the money back. That was debunked back in January. It was also talked about and denied that that's not the way this process works. This is a typical grant process that we have gone through many times. Also, in this report, that's a preliminary engineering assessment, is the intersection level service. And it is amazing that we look at, when you look at three lanes or five lanes in the year two thousand and forty, intersection level service is nearly the same at AM and PM per peak hours. But we have not had the time to review that and ask any questions to the engineering. With this being said, I still think the reimagined Ridge Road is vital to the town's success over the next five to fifty years. And there are ways for us to work together to meet the overall goal, goals for our town that we can make this better for safety and better for our residents. Better for safety, this is a big issue. I have met with the police chief and the fire chief in the spring of two thousand and twenty three after they both expressed their comments made at the Board of Safety meeting in the fall of two thousand and twenty two. They were led, led to believe that the initial grant could not be changed from a landscape center median. The landscape center median is not mountable, cannot be transferred from a vehicle. It was told to them that at that time, that was just in the grant application and the grant application could be, could be altered. And it has been, it hasn't altered. There is no plan for a central median, a landscape median. Additionally, a fire chief from another town called me and said he heard about the landscape median also. When I, when he was told that that was not going to be in the plans, he said, no worries, three lanes will be fine. Safety personnel has also met with the consultant team in fall of two thousand and twenty four, and those minutes were available to the public. However, now they've been taken offline and they're not any longer available. But again, it was a chance for the public safety people, including the hospital, to talk to the consultant team to express their concerns. In the plans on page five and six, another issue of why terms of residence safety is so important is that the it's, it states that there will be an increased demand for increased pedestrian bicycle access along Ridge Road to help mitigate the potential increased traffic due to the NICD station. Currently, the alternate two reduces the sidewalk width in front of the Ridge Road stores, and it has not addressed any ways to cross the street, especially in the downtown or train area. Alternate one provides the highest potential for safety improvements due to maximum reduction in pedestrian crossing lanes, maximum removal of potential right away, right angled crashes by reducing the amount of traffic turning vehicles needed to cross, and maximum reduction in side swipe crashes due to the decrease in lane changing movements. Head-on collisions will be reduced by better defining the center turn lane and access points along project line. That was from page ten. Or that was page nine. Page ten states that alternate, that alternate two does not meet the level of potential crash reduction points as much as the alternate one does. This is also better for business. In a March fourth, two thousand and twenty four article in Business Insider, Adam Rogers wrote, "Four decades worth of research cruised." I know this because I read every study and report I could find that looks specifically at the economics of bike lanes since nineteen eighty four. Thirty-two research articles to use exact. The research shows that making streets friendly for bikes and sidewalks friendlier for pedestrians is actually good for business. And has been a boon to businesses in many cities. And finally, this is better for residents. Starting in two thousand and twenty, with all the community outreach and support, this process has the opportunity to revitalize this portion of Munster, especially with the train starting in two thousand and twenty five. The advantages, the advantages of the reinvestment to this area and potentially to collectively work together with our residents together are so great, we must not take this project for the original intent without looking at the community process, research, and facts.
Councillor Gardner, I certainly appreciate all your comments. There's merit in, in some of it. There's some of it that we look at it differently. So, any other comments? Saying none?
Mr. President, I'm gonna wait. I do want to offer some thought. This alternative two that we are considering for the raise grants is part of a deep dive process that four members of this council started last year. And one of the big questions that we asked, we were aware of this community outreach, but we were, we had not seen any input from public safety officials, specifically the chief of police and fire chief. We went looking for. And I first was a little disturbed because when this project, there was a web, there was no website at the time. We started looking at this in the spring of last year. And consequently, I went in to the bureaucracy and I started putting in public records requests. I know our clerk treasurer recalls receiving many of those from me. And, and I thank you for your prompt production of that information. And one of the things that emerged, and I view it as a discovery, was the fact that our chief of police, Chief Shekel, and our fire chief, Chief Hydoo, had weighed in early on in this process. And in fact, they had been weighing in at department head meetings. Well, pardon, there are not, my understanding, you don't keep minutes at department meetings. But we do keep minutes at Board of Safety meetings. And there was a Board of Safety meeting that occurred on October twenty first, two thousand and twenty two. And that is a document that has been on the town website ever since. And it is there right now. In fact, I, I accessed that document today. And I'm gonna read some salient provisions. It's on page three. It's under section eight of those comment, of those minutes. Board's comments. Mr. Clark, who was a member of the Board of Safety at the time, Mr. Clark wanted to go on record as being opposed to the closing of the second lane of traffic on Ridge Road. He stated his concerns have to do with the safety of emergency vehicles being able to respond to calls for service. There was dialogue with then councilman Culturides, and later there was a sentence that stated Chiefs, Shekel and Hydoo stated that they have both strongly opposed the closure in their bi-weekly department head meetings. Now, I've spoken with both chiefs and it's my understanding to this day, they still oppose the lane reduction. We have thought about this, and we have thought about all the benefits of this grant. And one of the things we said last year is we are going to work tirelessly to try and meet all of the needs and concerns of the stakeholders. And I believe we have made great progress in the last nine months in doing that. We have considered the desire for the business community. We've listened to them. We've listened to good friends of ours, George. George and I have talked to Phil Bassino, who owns John Pizzeria. We talked to the Saronas Brothers, who owns the Commander Restaurant. We've talked to the owner of Howard's Meats, and we've talked to many business owners. And we've heard their concerns about what lane reduction would do to them. We've thought about it. We've also heard the, the concerns of residents who want bike and pedestrian access on Ridge Road, and we've thought about that. And we had a meeting not too long ago where we were discussing this, and Councilman Gardner has been very passionate in his desire for the three-lane configuration. And while he was talking about that, Chief Shekel and Chief Hydoo got up, and you'll all remember this. They went out in the hallway out there and they conferred, and then they came back in. And they sat down and they said, gentlemen, we have a compromise. Let's narrow each lane by a foot. Narrow it from eleven feet to ten feet. That will allow public safety vehicles access. You'll have five feet that you obtain. Add that to the five-foot sidewalk on the south side. There's your ten-foot pedestrian and bike lane. That is one of the desires of the raise grant. And they assured us that those configurations would meet their very real concerns about emergency vehicle traffic being caught up. And we observed that a couple of weeks ago on that, that car show on Ridge Road. I think George, you, you commented, and I heard this, that there was, there was emergency, there were ambulances trying to get through, and they got caught up. It's compromise. This is what we do here in Munster. We look at these projects. The, the, the three-lane configuration has serious flaws that trouble and concern our public safety officers. And we have felt it important to listen to all these concerns. And we believe that the alternate two represents a reasonable compromise for all of these concerns. That's what we're attempting to do, deliver a project that will allow us to keep the grant, deliver a project that will improve the Ridge Road corridor, and in fact, you can get on the town of Munster website, look at the agenda. There is the the document, what is it called? Preliminary engineering assessment. You can take a look at these two assessments. But please understand, this council has spent a lot of time trying to come, trying to balance all of these concerns and come up with a proposal that is a reasonable compromise between all of these competing stakeholder concerns and interests. And I think that alternate two is us delivering on those efforts. And I support alternate two. I will be pleased to move forward with it. And incidentally, the consultants were up here just this past Wednesday, and they made it clear, there will be community outreach and discussion of this. And we are going to have community meetings, but the council had to very thoughtfully and methodically balance all of these competing interests. And that's what alternate two is, is our attempt to compromise all these interests. Alternate one is the original proposal, but it, it lacks something very important. It lacks, it fails to address the very real concerns of our police department and our fire department. We have to, we have to listen to our professionals. And alternate two represents that balancing process, and I support the Shekel-Hydoo compromise. And, and I urge my colleagues on the council to do the same.
Thank you, Councillor Peterson and Councillor Gardner.
I, I guess the only thing I would add to that though is after that, that fall of two thousand and twenty two meeting, I did meet with both chiefs. And I do believe that they, when they made those comments, they were under the assumption that was a landscape median, and it was a two-lane, no center turn lane. And that's why they made those comments during that public safety meeting with the Board of Safety. Since that time, they have met with the design team. And, and from my understanding, when I talked to them at that time, their initial discussion, especially with that Board of Safety meeting, was mainly because they thought that the original grant was rigid and not being able to be changed from just strictly two lanes without a center turn lane. And, and I, I guess the other thing I would mention is, is the car show on September seventh. Yes, while there was cars parked on both sides of the road, you know, fifty cars on either sides of the road, we had people that were participating in the car cruise, going up and down, back and forth on Ridge Road, gawking at cars. We had at least three ambulance go through. And from my, my, my realization, all three of them made it through. Lansing came by twice, so, you know, they kept on coming through. The total delay in those ambulance getting through was minimal. People get out of the way when they hear sirens. So again, I think, and also we heard businesses talk about how they had multiple, multiple days worth of business in that one night. And I think that's what a walkable vibrant community does for you, and I think that's what we have to keep an eye on. I think there is compromise in this, but I don't think we've seen compromise at this time, reducing the width of a lane one foot. There's actually quite a bit that says that that might even be more dangerous and having two lanes that are ten foot wide than having a larger twelve-foot lane that was in alternate one. We've also taken away the walking that's in front of these stores. We've taken away at least two feet in some of those areas.
Well, there's certainly a lot more work to do on this, and we need to see where we stand with this and if it's available to do the adjustments that we want to do and keep the grant. With that, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
No.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. All right, that takes us up to reports. Any reports tonight? Saying none for political reports?
I wanted to bring up something from the Lake County Solid Waste that a number of the handlers are having trouble with recycling. There was a discussion that recycling actually costs more money than it brings in. The lightweight plastic, they brought up the lightweight plastic water bottles. It takes a substantial number more of those bottles to equal what the original water bottles did in terms of weight and being able to recycle it and haul it. And it's quite a it's quite difficult to find businesses that want to buy the recycled materials. China, they used to buy everything that we sent them their way, are buying very little. The aluminum can is still a good recycled item. But anyway, just for folks to know, we are lucky here in Munster that we're using hardwood for our travel.
But anyway, just for folks to know, we are lucky here in Munster that we're using Homewood for our trash hauling. And Homewood has one of the few recycling centers that's viable and it works with the haulers at this point. So there, there are, uh, service agreements. Uh, any other portfolios? Seeing the announcements, all town council meetings will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted. Uh, looking for adjournments, I don't believe. If I could motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, we have, folks, we have one more meeting to bring up, and that's our redevelopment commission. If you could just keep the noise down. Yeah, this is a quick meeting.
That's.
All right, please call the roll.
All right, the redevelopment commission, it is, uh, eight-thirty. Commissioner Schinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Nellens.
Here.
And our liaison to school board commissioner, are you a commissioner or just plain old John? Castro, nice to see you.
Always here, always here.
Next year too.
All right, we have the roll called. We do have an open to the public session here. If someone would like to come forward and speak in the open to the public with the redevelopment commission. It has the same rules as the main meeting. Is there anyone who will open up the open to the public? Is there anyone like to come forward at this time to speak in front of the redevelopment commission? Asking one more time, is there anyone like to come forward and speak to the redevelopment commission? Seeing if anyone will unclothe the open to the public. That takes us to the consent agenda.
Make a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion. We have support. Any further comments, questions on the consent agenda? Seeing them, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. And that takes us up to old business. There's no old business, no new business, no reports, no announcement. They're looking for an adjournment. So, Chuck and Tabor, talk back. George, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Exciting these moments.
Okay.
Makes sense.